Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Bellas Falls Union High School School District. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Chris Hodgson, are we all set?
Sorry, no, I'm all set. Nothing to add, nothing to take away.
Perfect. Review and approve board minutes of August 10th. And there's some lengthy stuff there. Does anybody have any things they want to change?
Yeah, I do.
Well, Mr. Fine, let's hear it.
Okay, number one, there's some real serious inaccuracies here in item number five. And what I'm, there's language here that says Stephen Fine has agreement of memorandum he received from Mr. Bartlett. Fine will need to get approval due to the two-page MOA. I don't know what that's all about, but it really ought to be stricken from those minutes. In addition to that, down at the, towards the bottom, it says Stephen Fine made the motion because of the MOA from Mr. Bartlett would at least start for the high school. I don't know who wrote that, but it's terrible syntax. If board adopts the motion, it opens the door. I don't know what that's all about, but that also ought to be stricken from those minutes because they're just inaccurate. In addition to that, somewhere in this item five, there ought to be a verbatim statement of the motion I made, and it should be identified as a verbatim statement of the motion. And I sent that around in a memo once these minutes were circulated. And those are the corrections I'm suggesting.
So is the paragraph right after Stephen Fine has agreement of memorandum he received from Mr. Bartlett? Then there's a sec, the next sentence, second sentence is Stephen Fine would like to make a motion to change the start date? Is that what you want your motion to, is that what you?
Those are the two pieces that really have to be taken out of these minutes.
Okay, anybody else got any comments on that before we try to correct this?
I just wanted to note that Marg O'Gia was in attendance as a board member.
So we have to add Marg O'Gia to the members attending. And Mr. Fine would like to take out of policies, number five. Steve Fine has agreement of memorandum. He received from Mr. Bartlett, fine will need to get approval due to the two-page MOA. And then at the bottom of your page, Stephen Fine made the motion because of the MOA from Mr. Bartlett would at least start for the high school.
And then if board adopts the motion, it opens the door. I don't know where that came from.
I, I missed, I didn't hear that, Steve.
After that last sentence, you, it says, if board adopts the motion, it opens the door.
Okay. Mr. Pratt, do you have any comments on that?
No, I do not. I know Mr. Fine sent us an email earlier, so after tonight, that'll be corrected.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with the corrections. Yes, Priscilla.
Molly.
Yes, Priscilla.
I have one question on the, when the corrections are done, are they actually being gone back to that, those minutes and are they corrected in those minutes? Because otherwise, if they're standing, people who only read those minutes will not get them in a corrected form. And I've seen them, I've seen them as kind of standing and it kind of, not sure that that should be happening, but that we should be going back and making sure they're corrected because we've put in the motion to correct.
Okay. Mr. Pratt, is that something Nicole does when she gets these corrections on, on this motion?
Yeah, we can repost the minutes once they're rewritten correctly.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 10th.
As corrected.
As amended.
Okay, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Motion to approve the board minutes as corrected for August 10th. And we'll do a roll call. Brenda?
Hi.
Thank you. David?
Hi.
Margot?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Hi.
Stephen?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Colin?
Hi.
Deb Wright?
Hi.
Did I miss anybody? Okay, motion passes. Is there any communication in public comments?
I do, Molly.
Jason?
How's everybody doing tonight?
I'm good.
So I read in the paper on Friday from the governor. I don't know if anybody had a chance to see the Bratton reformer today or over the weekend. So they tested 42,109 college students. And they have had 38 positive COVID tests come in. So that math is point oh nine. That's a really low number. And I also, you know, the teachers at the high school and, and you know, the administration's been doing a good job. So thank you for that and keep that up. We need you to, so as a public. So my question is, you know, next week, we have some events coming up at the school. Field hockey, JV and varsity at Hartford, soccer. Field hockey again on, on the 25th, that's a Friday. Soccer on Friday and football, seven on seven on Friday. You also have SATs on Wednesday to the 23rd. Then you have boys varsity soccer on the 26th. We're currently in stage two, and in order to be, to play those activities, you need to be in stage three. So I'm just wondering what the prognosis will be for all these kids that have been working so hard over the summer and doing everything that, that they've been doing, not, not just academically, but on the practice field with wearing a mask, which is very difficult and all that kind of stuff. And furthermore, we, we also have tech River Valley, which is a melting pot of students from all over the place that they're having school of four days. In person, four days at River Valley. And currently, as you guys know, we're in a hybrid. We also have special ed, four days. The fall guidance from the state has been that we can do three-on-three basketball outside. And as you guys know, October 15th is there, is going to be the state's decision, which to me personally doesn't make any sense that they're going to decide a few months before basketball even starts, which basketball really starts around Christmas time, even though it's December, it won't get really going until Christmas. So what I'm asking is that, two questions, I guess. How soon can we get to step three for these kids for next week? And then I would like, if the numbers remain low, which I hope and I anticipate, that I'm requesting that the board for the high school send a letter to the state or VPA, whichever, I'm not sure which, I would need your guidance on that. I'm willing to help also. That your intentions to participate in winter sports. And I'm hoping that we could get other high schools as well to band together and let the VPA and the state know our intentions. So, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. You're welcome. I'm trying to check the chat. Can't, is there anything else? Any other communication, public comments? There's nothing in the chat room. Okay. Policies, do we have any policies, Chris?
No, we do not at this time.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Um, I'm just going to share real quick. I sent my superintendent's report out in a newsletter format to our board members and families. I believe it was on Friday. So this I'll be reporting out to all the other boards. I'll get into specific reports at the SU Board. But this here, if you were to go to the SU website and scroll down, there's a section towards the bottom that says newsletter. So anyone who wants to read the newsletter that you don't have children in the school and we're not sent to via emails, that will continue each month, you can access the newsletter on the WNSU website. Also, there's a section down at the bottom. Simply if people do have questions for the superintendent, myself or Dr. Carey, they can send them to us directly and just mark, mark it in the title field, ask the superintendent, and I will include that in the next newsletter. Beyond that, this is, today we started this schedule that you, you see in front of you right now. And that's going to be through weeks two to six. And before I hand it over to the high school administration, I just want to thank all the teachers, all the administration for a, a great start to the school year under the certain criteria and conditions that we currently have. I think the teachers, the administration, everyone involved in the educational community in Windham Northeast has done an outstanding job for providing the best education we can under those current circumstances. So I wanted to thank all of them. But anyone who wants to read the monthly newsletter, which is pretty much my report in different format, I would ask if you, like I said before, if you, you don't have a child in the school system, but you still want to access the newsletter, you can do so at the wnsu.org website. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris Pratt? Okay, let's move on to the principal report. Mr. Hodgson?
Hey, so I have a couple of topics to cover. First, of course, is the reopening of school. I gave a brief report at the WNSU meeting. I would have to say, all things considered, I've been very happy with how things have, have opened up for us. As everyone knows, we took many months to create a pretty detailed plan in accordance with the state guidelines. We then had a good amount of time at the start of the school year to, to prep for that, to both train our teachers and give them the opportunity to do their lesson planning with a hybrid model in mind, which involves planning for both remote learning and for in-person learning and in most cases, trying to pull both of those off at the same time. Really, I have to say that the, any obstacles that we've encountered have been fairly typical obstacles to the start of a school year. It takes a little bit for, for things like busing routes to get solidified and students to get comfortable with that and students getting back into the routine and teachers getting back into the routine. And our routines are all brand-new routines. But I have seen both the staff and the students being very cooperative with and receptive to all of these new constraints that are being placed on staff and students as we reopen school. And our attendance has been solid, a low of two students absent on one day to a high of 11, but even 11 is, is in excess of 95% of attendance. So so far, things are going very well. The one other point that I wanted to make unrelated to the opening of schools is I think you might have noted in the superintendent's report that Bellas Falls Union High School once again has performed well on the rankings provided by U.S. News &amp; World Report. 16th out of more than 60 high schools in the state of Vermont and in the top 25 in the national, 25%, not the top 25, but top 25% in the national rankings as well. So I wanted to get that word out there and acknowledge that things are still going well in, in those rankings that we get from U.S. News &amp; World Report. That's what I got.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hodgson? Priscilla?
Molly, Chris, could you let us know how the students that are going to the tech center are checked for going on the bus or some, you know, because some probably are driving to school and getting on it possibly, and those that are just getting from home.
So what Springfield and Bratton know is that the students that arrive by bus will have been screened by us. So they go through the same screening process, so they have to pick up the bus at school. And so when they show up, they go through the screening process that all the other students do. Springfield and Bratton also know that students that are arriving by car need to be screened, so they're doing that screening there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Margot?
So I had a question related back to Jason Terry's comments during the public comment. And I'm just curious, how does a school move from the second phase into the third in terms of COVID?
That doesn't happen at the school level. That's a state call. So we, there's, and, and we have asked about the criteria that they're using and they do not, they have not as of yet shared, at least that I'm aware of, this, a rubric or a set of expected hoops to, to meet in order to go from step two to step three. So yeah, I think that's an important point to make. That's not, there's not a single state, not a single school in the state of Vermont that is on their own going to be declared step three. That's a statewide declaration. Does that answer your question, Mark?
Oh, it does. Thank you.
I see you, Priscilla. I'm just checking to see if anyone else had a question.
Mine relates to the, what just was. Chris, isn't that predicted that it was going to be week three and possibly, possibly extended a little longer? Before school started, they were saying week three would be going to step three. This, this last week on the news, it was saying, on the governor's report, it was saying three or four.
Yeah. So you're right, Priscilla. That's, that's what we've been, that's what we've been told to expect. I think there are a lot of good reasons to give us at least some sort of target as to what they anticipate. And this also plays back to Mr. Terry's comments in that with that in mind, we have established an activity schedule, particularly a sports schedule, with next week being the first possible week to play in mind. And so we have held on to all of those games from September 21st on and are preparing ourselves with the, with the hope and the optimism that, that things will continue to go well and that next week we might actually get some teams on some fields.
Margot?
So continuing along this same line, if we do move into step three, does that open up possibility for other extracurriculars to possibly meet? I'm thinking about, you know, whether it's yearbook or drama club or?
Well, um, the current step two doesn't necessarily inherently limit the things that you've talked about there. For example, yearbook could easily work with virtual meetings. And by the way, by this time of the year, maybe in a regular year, the yearbook committee would have met once, but that's not necessarily a given. So I'm not necessarily thinking there's limitations on there, although I do have to say, we still don't have last year's yearbooks in and we're hopeful for October. But that has to do with economic shutdowns on the company's end that produces the yearbook. But we have created a plan for a fall drama production that could be done outside. And we were looking at doing an abridged version of Macbeth. But I will say, we haven't had a lot of student interest yet. And I, and one of the challenges is when we aren't all together for the same stretches of time that we normally are, it makes it more difficult for the drama, the, the staff who are involved in that to do a little recruiting, you might say. So, so that, that step three would certainly be important when we got to the production time, you know, for, for putting a play on outside. But in terms of getting these things up and running, that step three doesn't limit it any more than it limits teams from practicing. So we're able to practice in step two, we would be able to run these other co-curriculars to the degree that we normally do in step two as well.
All right, thank you.
Priscilla?
Following up on that, if we're going to step three, when we do, are you considering and thinking that of modifying our steps and maybe increasing our academic and changing our academic plans a little bit? Because they are telling us that it's easier to open up and we should be ready with some kind of plans and so to do some of that a little quicker. What you're feeling on that?
Yeah, so that's, I'm glad you asked it that way, Priscilla, because it will be my feelings on that, which I would, I would have to say that when step three comes out, I expect that there's going to be some reasonably specific guidelines on how that would, would cause us to loosen things up. And so one would hope that if step three is an indication that things are getting better, that we would be able to move ourselves closer to a more normal school setting and a more normal school arrangement. But quite honestly, that, that will be driven by whatever guidance comes out with us moving to step three. I don't think it's going to be just flat out, you're at step three, congratulations. I think it's going to have some guidelines that go along with it. And just like where we are right now, we'll follow those guidelines and, and, you know, do what we can for the students.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up, Chris. I think you're off the hook. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there a finance report?
I know that Flora, a new business manager, sent out the, the financials. So I'm assuming this is an opportunity, if anyone has any questions to ask Mrs. Pagan, pagan questions on the finances, that would be the time.
Flora's on, if anybody's got any questions. Colin? Flora, are you on?
Yes.
Yes, I am here. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, I have just a quick question. It's somewhat, it's related to finances, but it's not specifically dissecting a section of the finances. During COVID, who was reviewing the warrants? Were they sent to the chair? Are you there?
Flora probably can't answer that and they were not sent through.
Reviewing the orders?
The, the warrants, who was reviewing those during the COVID, you know, from like March 17th to when the office was reopened?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, sure, Molly.
I think David can answer that question. There are people that sign the warrants.
Right.
And I believe that they were getting checked over, but David?
Thank you, Molly. Deb Wright and I have signed warrants, actually, since reorganization in March.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, David, because of COVID. I mean, because the central office was shut down at one point. So I just was, my, you know, my concern and question was, you know, obviously they were being reviewed, but I wanted to make sure that the protocol was still being followed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
The office was closed, but people were still working from home. So it's not like it was actually 100% shut down.
Well, right, no, correct. I just wanted to make, you know, I was thinking the other day, you know, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I knew it was happening, but I just wanted a human to tell me and not a computer.
That's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else for Flora? Okay. I'm not aware of any committee reports. Chris, do we, you have any?
No, I don't have any.
Mr. Clark, WNESU Board Meeting Review.
Thank you, Molly. WNESU Board Meeting last Wednesday, we went quite extensively over two days' worth of reopening procedure in all of the schools. I believe we had all the principals on the line. We got distribution of class loads, the two cohorts. And I would say outside of that very lengthy and interesting discussion, the only major business that we attempted to pursue was to come up with a protocol for public participation in Zoom meetings. And I would describe that currently, Molly, as a work in progress. There's your report.
Thank you. Any unfinished business for discussion? I don't have anything and nobody's speaking, so. New business for discussion in action?
I have none.
Chris and Chris, we're good?
Yep.
All right. I think this one is probably for Chris Hodgson. Appointments or resignations? A resignation from Michael Norcom, earth science teacher.
Yes, so about a week before the teachers came back, Mike Norcom, earth science teacher for about 12 years, submitted a letter of resignation with the, I'm not sure if the letter stated this, but he had the intention of taking a teaching position at Keene High School.
So we need a motion to accept this letter of resignation?
I'll go ahead and make that.
To accept Michael Norcom's letter of resignation with regret that he's leaving us.
Okay.
And appreciation of his work.
All right, she kind of cut you off, Colin, so I'm going to give her that motion and we'll use.
Totally fine. I'll second it if we need a second.
Thank you very much. Motion's been made and seconded to accept Michael Norcom's resignation as earth science teacher for the Bellas Falls Union High School. Let's have a roll call. Mr. Clark?
No, and I'll explain my no when we get down to director's comments.
Okay, Margot?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes, and I spoke with Michael in person and he felt that health-wise, that's what he had to do.
Colin?
Yes.
Thank you. Jack?
No, probably for the same reason that David is going to object to this. He has somebody taking a salary from us for two months and then resigns with no notice. That's not okay.
Steve Fine?
No.
Deb Wright?
No.
Chris, help me out. I think. I think I got four and four. And I've got all members, right?
Seem to.
So with administration's recommendation, I'm going to vote yes. So motion passes five to four to accept Michael Norcom's letter of resignation. Is there any executive session? Director's comments?
Molly, before we go to director's comments, can I ask a question? I, I would like maybe an explanation from the principal or the superintendent about salary, because I believe that Michael would not have gotten any salary. It doesn't start for this year until the first week of actual work. So if he resigned before school started, he wouldn't have been getting that salary. And the, the, the year of health goes from September 1st to September 1st, so he would have been getting his health stuff from last year, I believe. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
Mr. Clark, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I think Priscilla's correct in regards to how the, the salary rolls out. So we weren't paying him, but I, I can add, so Priscilla is correct in that, it's all, you know, coming out from where he's, he's already worked it, he's already earned that money he's gotten. But, but, you know, I can add to that is that as superintendent, when I got it, I did not, I did not accept it because of the timing behind when we found out. And I, you know, and the principal and I spoke about it, and we, we did talk to Mr. as moving forward, but, so.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to go to director's comments if everybody's all set. And we're going to start with Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Molly. Jack Brier very neatly summed up my objections to the acceptance of the resignation letter from Michael Norcom. It's because when they come in at the 11th hour and essentially unilaterally break a contract that they're obligated for, I think that's a bad practice. Certainly, we would not be allowed to do that as the employers. I have two other items, Molly. And the first item are student planners. We were tagged $650 to $750 in freight on a pile of paper known as the student planners. I think that's an unconscionable amount of money to pay for transportation. I have addressed this to Chris Hodgson. I'm not certain that I feel at this point in time, we've had a satisfactory explanation of that. So I'm hopeful maybe at the next meeting, now that it's on the, shall we say, on the radar at this meeting, maybe we can find out more about how we ended up paying such a large amount of money for student planners. Now, one other item, and that is that I make note of the fact that the West River Valley has not even opened yet this year for school. And the reason that they are not open is they have serious concerns about the adequacy of the HVA systems in the West River District. It's my understanding from reading the Bradler Bar reformers that they intend to have their systems surveyed by a competent engineer and make whatever remediation is necessary to ensure a safe environment for students. And once again, I have brought my concerns about HVAC up in this context about the high school, and I feel very strongly that we should have a inspection done by a certified third-party engineer to tell us about the adequacy of the high school's HVAC, so that we have a sense as to whether it is in fact a suitable system for student and teacher health. I could, of course, expand those comments to cover the rest of the schools in Windham Northeast, but I feel that this is a local issue for the Union High School Board, and if other boards wish to pursue it with regards to their schools, then that's their option to do it or not do it. Those are my comments, Molly, so thank you.
Thank you.
The only comment I have is just a thank you for the administration and all staff and families, because as a parent, I have seen and just witnessed a really smooth start to the school year. This is very challenging for every person that's involved with it. And just from one parent's perspective, it's been as smooth as I could imagine it would be in these kinds of circumstances. So thank you.
Brenda?
I'm listening.
If I can unmute. Yes, I am thrilled that the things seem to be going as well as they are. I would hope that we are also quickly working on a plan at least, or moving to a more intense in-person presentation, even going to four days and then moving to, to the five, if we can do that with no COVID in our area as soon as possible, and hopefully not waiting for the full six weeks, since I think the more we can do for our students, the better off we are. I'm thrilled that the sports program has gotten off to at least the start that it is, and hopefully we'll soon be at Level Three so that more can be taking place. I'm thinking positive. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Molly. I got a very positive feedback from several parents and members of the community about the opening of school this week. A lot of people approached me when I was, you know, out and about running errands and whatnot. That being said, I'm very, very, very concerned about, over the weekend, I happened to glance on Facebook and see that there were sports pictures taken of our current football team, where they were stacked on top of each other taking the picture, and no masks were worn. We are now in the first week of school, okay? We, and I commend the administration and everything, but we are telling them to wear masks in the building, and we're going through these screenings and processes. Yes, it was outside, but the students were not six feet apart. To me, that is not okay, and I don't understand how that was allowed. Chris Hodgson and I had an email, he can speak to this if he chooses to, this afternoon, saying the nurse was not concerned about that. I, I just, I, I'm normally not a thorn on this board, but this isn't over. And when I saw that, I sat back and I'm like, what, what? Like, maybe I'm overreacting. I don't know, but I just, I'm really concerned about that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the school opened up relatively well, but there are a couple of things that we do need to be aware of. One, unfortunately, is that we're now getting new reports from CDC that that actually might not be available until 2024, which is not good news. And it means that in the interim period, we have to be smart about certain things. We have to be smart about whether or not the building has issues, and I think that I would certainly support having a discussion about getting a engineering study on the next agenda, Molly, if we could. And second, the entryway for disease, certainly at the college level this year, has been sports teams, and Colin has made an extremely good point. We need to make certain that we communicate very clearly to, to our teams that they are a recreational activity, and if they can't manage to engage in the appropriate level of social distancing, then those items really have to be examined. This is serious business. The amount of cardiovascular disease suffered by young people with COVID is not trivial. It's a lifelong thing if they get it, and we need to pay attention and take it seriously so that the children under our care take it seriously. That's all I got.
Thank you. Steve Fine?
I want to, huh? Who'd you call?
I called you.
I'll echo David's remarks about accepting the resignation. I think that, you know, we sign a contract every year with teachers, but the fact of the matter is, we are the only people who are bound to it. And every time, over the years that I've been on all the boards that I've been on, every time a teacher decides to resign, the administration recommends that it be accepted, which I think is outrageous to begin with, and the boards always accept it without recognizing that the boards are the only ones that end up being bound to these things. In any event, that's why I voted no.
Thank you. Deb Wright?
Yes, so I don't have the same things to say about high school opening as I do about grade school. That's a little more serious, and most of those kids are older, so they might be able to cope being at home alone. I did want to bring up the fact, I was looking at the warrants today that I signed digitally, remotely, and I'm wondering what we're going to do for milk, because Thomas Dairy, the Vermont State Dairy, maybe the last one in our part of the state, is closing at the end of September, and that is the milk provider that we typically use according to our warrants. I'm assuming that is something that will go out to bid, maybe, or for the entire school district, but it is on the, on the high school warrants, too. Thanks, that's it.
I have items for the next gen, for the next board meeting. We'd like an explanation on the freight for the planners and an HVAC engineering report. Am I got that right? David and Jack?
I would have something more broad in terms of a, an engineering study of the facility, because again, we're dealing with one of the few without walls, and we need to know if we need to do things to prevent community spread in what is basically a large auditorium.
Date of next board meeting? I would like to call this meeting again.